This time we call Shirley City Council meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Robert Campbell to come forward, he's going to do our dedication tonight.
Let's bow our heads. For Jesus, we recognize that you give us all the strength and all the courage to go forward. City, we ask you to be with us and lead us and guide us and grant wisdom in your precious name.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll, please. Ask the Shirley Police Department to come forward, they have some awards that they would like to present at this time.
This is the life saving award is presented to Officer William Moore for his actions performed in the light of duty, which through prompt and alert action resulted in the saving of a life. On September the 8th, 2015, Officer William Moore responded to a disturbance on Carlos Circum in Sherwood. Upon his arrival, he observed an individual outside residence that was asking for assistance. Officer Moore made contact with the individual and observed him to be bleeding heavily from his right forearm area. Officer Moore immediately applied direct pressure to the wound and quickly realized that more urgent treatment was needed. Officer Moore called for an additional unit to bring him a tourniquet. Officer Aaron Kreis arrived on scene with the tourniquet, it was placed on the upper right arm of the individual and the bleeding was controlled. MEMS arrived on scene and transported the individual to the hospital. MEMS personnel contacted the Sherwood Police Department as to the incident, advice of the prompt recognition and action on the part of Officer Moore directly resulted in the life of the individual being saved. The individual is cut and arched, green his arm, would have circumcised death in connection with the prompt action by Officer Moore. Officer Moore's performance in his duties directly saved the life of the citizen of Sherwood and his actions represent the highest ideals of law enforcement to him and Sherwood Police Department. The actions of Officer Moore bring great credit to himself, Sherwood Police Department, and the city of Sherwood. Shout out by Chief Jim Bidwell and Mayor of Sherwood.
Appreciate you, that's just another example of some of the great police officers that we have in our city. This time committee's in our commissions, advertising and promotion commission. We did meet in the minutes during your packet. Our next meeting will be changed November 12th at 3:30. Thank you. Let's do the services commission. Parks and Recreation Committee.
We met, but we had no forum at the meeting this month, we'll try to meet again.
Personnel Committee.
We did not meet, this month, we will meet the member of the FIB, John Harmon, Lieutenant Lieutenant.
Very good, thank you. Planning Commission, on business. Senior Citizen Committee.
A resolution pointing Mary Ann Morton to serve on the Sherwood Senior Citizen Committee now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Sherwood, Arkansas, that the following person is appointed to serve on the Sherwood Senior Citizen Committee. Term expires forth, Mary Ann Morton, term expires 12/31/2016, that is your resolution.
May we put the adoption of the resolution, second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
I would like that Mrs. Morton is in the audience tonight and appreciate you coming tonight and your willingness to serve. Also, she will be replacing the remainder of the term of Dr. Steve Finger, who felt like that it was time for him to step off early.
We did meet there this month.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight again. Service Committee. Street Committee.
Street Committee did not meet this month, will meet next month at the 2nd Thursday, 5:30 to Bill Harmon, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad on the driving range at Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes first reading.
Let's place your council.
May we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Second. Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad for the driving range at the Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes second reading.
May we suspend the rules and put it on the third reading?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad for the driving range at Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes, that is the third reading.
May we put the adoption?
Okay.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Upstange.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad for the maintenance building at the Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes, first reading.
May we suspend the rules and put it on the second reading? Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad for the maintenance building at the Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes, second reading.
May we suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and an elected official spouse concerning the construction of a concrete pad for the maintenance building at the Greens and North Hills Park, declaring emergency for the purposes, that is the third reading.
May we put the adoption?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Upstange.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance certified to the Gilchrist County Clerk, the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on its taxable real and personal property for tax year 2015, declaring emergency for the purposes, first reading.
This is something that we are required to do annually for the library issue.
May we suspend the rules, place the ordinance on the second reading?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance certifying to the Gilchrist County Clerk, the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on the taxable real and personal property for tax year 2015, declaring emergency for the purposes, second reading.
May we suspend the rules, place the ordinance on the third reading?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
An ordinance certifying to the Gilchrist County Clerk, the rate of taxation to be levied by the city of Sherwood, Arkansas on the taxable real and personal property for tax year 2015, declaring emergency and for other purposes, that is the third reading.
May we put the adoption of the ordinance? Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
There is a mercy clause.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Upstange.
Lilly.
Aye.
Members of the council, the item 11, when your packet was prepared for this week contained a draft ordinance. It, on your table in front of you, is a final version of this ordinance, which these bond ordinances have to be adjusted for various reasons up to pretty much right upon the time of this consideration by the council. I'm going to ask for a motion to substitute the final ordinance for...
Sound loop.
Second. So what are the differences?
Well, the, I'll ask Mr. Spivey to step forward. We need to vote on the, but we have a replacement on the board.
Right.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
And Kevin, I'm going to ask Mr. Spivey to respond to your question, and then we're going to deviate from the protocol tonight. He's going to ask you to do the reading on the ordinance when we next step forward. Do you want to explain what you're tweaking in adjustments technically?
The principal difference is that the bonds were not sold until today. And when this ordinance went out, the schedule to come back, which gives the final maturities and interest rates, was incomplete. It could only be completed once the underwriters said all their bonds were saved. That happened this morning, and I'm going to start with Mr. Phillips and then give you a report on the sale. There are some other minor differences, insubstantial differences, which have to do with punctuation and a word taken out here or there, but the principal substantive difference is that until the bonds are sold, we can't fill that in. This is typical procedure with this kind of bond issue. The city of Little Rock sold, or actually, Mr. Phillips' firm sold $37 million bonds through the city of Little Rock last week, and we did exactly the same procedure there. Once the bonds were sold, we completed the ordinance and presented the final ordinance at the city board meeting on Tuesday night. And so, this is pretty much what we have to do, wait till the last minute to settle the bonds and assert the final maturities and interest rates.
Go ahead, do the first reading.
You have to do. I think probably Paul would like to give you the presentation on the...
Sure, whatever order you want to take.
Again, I'm Paul Phillips, Senior Manager, Drive and Crews and Associates, on behalf of our entire firm, thank you again for allowing us to be a service in connection with library construction bonds. It's really a good team we have here, and I appreciate Mr. Spivey and his office and all their hard work. After what seems like months of getting paperwork in place this morning, we opened up an order period for the bonds at 10:00 a.m., and by noon, we had all the bonds public. At the end of the day, the interest rate, the combined maturities, the true interest cost was a 2.65 percent, very attractive interest rate. I'm kind of proud to say that there wasn't any particular order of the securities that drove the transaction. We had orders from literally all parts of the state, everywhere in between, so it was very well received. Obviously, there's not a whole lot of people with Sherwood in their portfolios, I think that mattered, the name was, and it turned out that they greatly, that interest rate at 2.65 was a very aggressive rate. I will say that we marketed the bonds, as you can see there, with a 2036 final maturity. That's not necessarily the way we sold them, because we sold them based on prepayment, because what we have in this transaction is estimated tax receipts of approximately $585,000 a year versus a debt service of about $360,000. So as a result, we've got that margin to prepay bonds. And so, in prepay analysis, with no growth whatsoever in your level of assessments and thus tax collections, we've demonstrated that these bonds could pay off as soon as 2027. Obviously, with a little bit of growth, that process of prepayment would be expedited. So all in all, it was a very successful day, pretty good name. I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody may have.
We appreciate your hard work on it.
Thank you.
What I understand is very good, right? We should be very pleased with that.
First reading. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a series of library construction bonds for the purpose of funding acquisition, construction, and equipment of library capital improvement projects, pledging library tax revenues and special tax collections sufficient to pay the principal obligations on the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of trust and venture, authorizing the accomplishment of the project's approving and official statement, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency, that completes first reading.
May we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Second. I have a one question. It's on the second page.
Yes, sir.
Where it says, "The last where hands," and then it says, "Now therefore be ordained by the Board of Directors." Should that be Board of Directors or City Council, or does it matter?
It matters to me, because it's a mistake, and I would like to correct that.
Okay.
If, I would draw my motion.
I'll draw my second.
Yeah.
Make a motion to...
I would make a motion to change the, "Now therefore be ordained by the City Council" of the city of Sherwood.
Second, this amendment.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Alderman McMahon. Mr. Spivey, customarily, when we do an amendment, we just start over, go to the first reading.
That's fine, I think that's appropriate.
First reading. By title only, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a series of library construction bonds for the purpose of funding acquisition, construction, and equipment of library capital improvement projects, pledging library tax revenues and special tax collections sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust and venture, authorizing the accomplishment of the project's approving an official statement, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency, that completes first reading.
May we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading as amended?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Second reading, by title only, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a series of library construction bonds for the purpose of funding acquisition, construction, and equipment of library capital improvement projects, pledging library tax revenues and special tax collections sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust and venture, authorizing the accomplishment of the project's approving an official statement, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency, that completes the second reading as amended?
May we suspend the rules and put it on the third and final reading?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Third reading, by title only, as amended, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a series of library construction bonds for the purpose of funding acquisition, construction, and equipment of library capital improvement projects, pledging library tax revenues and special tax collections sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust and venture, authorizing the accomplishment of the project's approving an official statement, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency, that completes the third reading by title only, as amended.
May we put the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
There is a mercy clause.
Sanders.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Kevlinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Can I ask you a question just regarding the library? We have a timetable of events now of like, what's coming up? Well, I'm on the next items, and I was going to have an old business update on the property. Okay, good. We'll do that under old business then. First item, old business, I have asked Alderman Harmon to give us a sign revision update.
Okay. I put at everybody's place tonight copies of some articles about a case that Springport handed down this spring. It's called Read the Town of Gilbert, Gilbert, Arizona. The result of this case was basically to negate most of the work that I've done on the, on sign ordinance. It eliminated all content-based, it eliminated content-based sign ordinances, but it redefined content-based sign ordinances. For instance, no longer can your sign ordinance say anything about drug cell signs. You can't even use the term drug cell signs. You can't use the term real estate signs. We can't say anything about real estate signs in our sign ordinances anymore. We can't say anything in our sign ordinances that defines a sign ordinance by even remotely the content of the sign. The, Steve was at the R Association meeting and...
International Municipal Lawyers.
International Municipal Lawyers. And they had an entire day basically on sign ordinances and on the, basically, the destruction of the sign ordinances of cities all over the country. In fact, this case basically threw out the sign ordinances of cities all over the country. And what they're going to be doing is they're going to be developing a model sign code for cities to work off of, to try to rebuild the sign ordinances and make them constitutional. So, I just, since this came out, I've done, I've done nothing because I don't know what to do. I'm back at square one, because we have everything that I've, a lot of what I've done would now be considered unconstitutional under the new law. So, that's where we are, and it was Steve's recommendation to me that I do nothing until we have this new model code come out and that we wait to see what the new model sign code, model sign ordinance looks like, and then we work off of that. So, that's the status of the final.
Steve, when you anticipate, what's anticipation of that?
Well, it's, American R Association, they announced at the meeting that they were, that the proposed ordinance was coming out, the words are this fall, so I'm anticipating within the next month, I hope.
Okay. All right, thank you. I've asked Alderman Williams to have updates on the land purchase for the new library. Mary Ann and I have had a meeting with regard to the property owners for the library property, have had a couple of follow-up conversations, have met a second time, and have actually believed that we are close to having a reduced price on our land. And hopefully, at the end of this week, or the first of next week, we will be able to go ahead and sign some paperwork. But I'm very proud of both the property owners' willingness to help us save some taxpayer dollars with regard to this, and the willingness of all of us. We've learned a lot, and I appreciate Ellen in educating us with regard to some of the things. Now, part of it is that the idea of putting in the water and sewer was, made us a proposal with that, in that price. And because of where it's going to be located, there's a closer tap that would be better for us possibly to go through, so that's going to allow us to possibly reduce the price even some more. So, we do believe that we have negotiated, we're not quite as good as Alderman Kevlinger on his negotiation skills, but I am pleased that, and I hope you'll be pleased that we have reduced the price. How do you say that? I thought, I thought we've done a nice job, and I would like, again, appreciate the property owner working with us. But nothing is signed, and we're ready to go. That does not hinder the moving forward of the project itself. New business.
Madam Chair, I had something under old business, somebody...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Just came, came up. The service line warranty folks, I have gotten several emails, several phone calls about this situation, and I have one question that I didn't understand. According to what they send out in letters, they're talking water service line repair. I understood that when we passed this ordinance, it was concerning sewer line repair from the street to the house if it broke, that was uncovered. Sewer line repair, not water line repair. These letters directly say water service line repair. So, I don't know if there's a difference between the water service, I'm sure there is a difference, because I've got a water service line and I've got a sewer line.
I hope they hit.
Yeah, I make two of them. But I, I wondered what was funny about my warranty.
You've got a water line, I hope you got one.
Yeah. Anyhow, I'm concerned about that aspect of it, number one, and number two, we've had several citizens that are very upset about the Sherwood letterhead on this letter, and some questions come up about it. So, I wanted to bring it to our attention tonight, number one. Number two, I did want to see if we could get some clarification on this, that this was not the water service line, it should be the sewer service line.
Alderman, Lilly, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was in the spring, the first mail out was for the sewer lines, and this one that they just completed was for the water line, is that how you remember?
I believe that's accurate. I mean, I know that both were discussed, the sewer line being the primary, the main item that they were going after, but the water line was certainly a part of that and part of what we voted on as council.
I had another question in regards to that, that I was contacted by a citizen about. Not all of the areas in Sherwood are receiving these letters, because some are under North Little Rock, like in our, or the Gap Creek area, for example.